Okay, I am going to call the Planning Commission Administrative Session for July 16th. In session at 7:06. For the record, present is Commissioner Vigliotti, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Staley, and Commissioner Petuski, and hopefully Commissioner Semph will be arriving soon. Okay, let's start off with approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from June 18.
Second? Mr. Staley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? No, passes unanimously. Okay. Any zoning referrals?
None.
Cam reviews?
None.
A-24 reviews?
None.
Discussion of Section 5.3 of the zoning regulations. We're holding on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Erosion and sediment control plan?
None.
Now we go to the bond release request, and I'd like to have a motion to waive the rules and add an item. At the last month's meeting, we approved the release of a bond for the property of, I know it's Grove Street, I forget the number.
207 Grove Street.
Okay, 207 Grove Street, in the amount of $40,000.022. And the town engineer and the town planner have asked us to adjust that to, and I'll leave it to Sismita to give us the exact amounts.
Thank you. So, um...
First, the rules first.
Oh, okay. So, basically, that's what we're waiving the rules, is to take that up. We'll get more details, okay? Can I have a motion to waive the rules? Okay. Mr. Staley, a second? Mr. Watson, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Thanks for reminding me.
I'm a vote for that.
Yeah. I just assumed we were going to do that. Okay, now we're going to go into what we're actually going to vote on.
Okay, so, I spoke to the Finance Department, and I checked the bond that was posted on this property. The actual amount of subdivision bond is only $35,700. And the remaining amount, in that total of $40,022, accounts for the inspection fee and the sidewalk fund, which were paid separately, the town engineer, in the form of two checks. So, the inspection fee is in the amount of $1,622, and the sidewalk fund amount is $2,700. So, now, I request the commission to actually amend these numbers, and, in the total, and just spell this difference out accurately by saying that the subdivision bond could be released in an amount of $35,700, and the two checks that were posted for the inspection and sidewalk fund in the amounts of $1,622 and $2,700 respectively, be released to the applicant.
Can you repeat that, please?
Inspection fee, $1,000.622. Sidewalk fund is $2,700.
And the bond is $35,700.
And the subdivision bond is $35,700.
It still comes out to $40,000.022, it's just how it breaks out, and they want it done specifically so that the amounts get reimbursed to those accounts. The sidewalk fee and the inspection fee. Okay. So, could I, any discussion, or could I have a motion to do that?
They obviously thought that was adequate for the installation.
Well, this was a unique case where they first went and for a four-lot subdivision, got it approved, but then realized later that they don't want to do it, and then they want it unsubdivision, which means that they're going back to its current state. So, whatever the amount they have posted is not required, and so, we just have to return the money.
And we already voted to undo the subdivision.
Thank you.
We actually approved the whole amount, now we want to break it down.
I approve that we accept the breakdown to correct our accounting of the funds for the roads.
207 Grove.
207 Grove Street.
Okay, can I have a second? Mr. Vigliotti, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Moving right along. Okay. Greenway project, right now, we don't have anything, correct? And complete streets, we, I know Sismita sent...
May I make a comment?
On, okay.
I had spoken...
As an individual, I spoke a year ago to the Connecticut Department of Transportation concerning their accommodation of biking on the new exits.
33?
33. And they had come up with, they had come up with a plan for that. I would like to get someone to confirm that they are actually going through with that. There's a state law that came about, I think as early as 2010, but if they are doing any substantial revision renovation to highways, and it can accommodate multimodal transportation, including bikeways and sidewalks, that they are to accommodate that. I got them to agree to that over a year and a half ago, that yes, we qualified for that, and yes, that is part of the East Coast Greenway. It is mapped nationally as part of the East Coast Greenway, that they agreed to a five-foot strip on the side, and they agreed to making sure there were sidewalks along the whole area. So, I just want, I want to make, I guess I want to ask Planning or Zoning to go back and ask them, is it in their plans?
Did you say you spoke to some DOT engineer?
I spoke with the then-project manager.
Who is that?
A woman.
Do you know her name?
I'm going to have to go back and research it.
I think that will be very helpful, because then I can go through those channels that have, you know, already been established.
Okay. I know that they're moving very quickly, and they're moving very fast with all of this.
But I'll talk, like, I have to first confirm with them, and then talk to who was the project manager in the town. Obviously, it would be the J or somebody from Economic Development, but it'll be helpful for me to know the DOT engineer's name.
Because that would complete a good section of our Ferry Boulevard Greenway.
And I'll also talk to John Casey and see maybe he is involved in that.
Okay. So, if you could follow up on that, and also, we should have all received, Sismita sent us a summary of the Complete Streets meeting that we had at the last meeting in June. So, everybody should have received that. Thank you very much for doing that.
If I can comment on that.
Can I pause?
Mr. Staley?
Thank you. The, I did receive the summary, very good summary. I attended the meeting.
I did.
And it was a very good, informative. The, it's a process, not a short process, but the reading, the bullet points, it looks as if the, I'm not sure if all the pieces, I don't have a picture of the whole project, and I would like to see that. Can I see that at your office?
Sure, right now?
Not now.
I mean, currently, in general, those drawings are being reviewed by the, I think they're either submitted to DOT, or they're about to submit to DOT. MetroCog is handling this. But my intent is to actually, you know, get all the comments from DOT as well, and then have them address those, and then I can share those with you and everybody else in the town. Because there's a lot of things that are happening parallelly right now. We are also working on our application for additional funding, and they have requested us to make some adjustments to the designs, and now we have to talk to the consultant regarding that, and then how we can incorporate DOT's comments, as well as community's feedback into those designs. So, I don't know if, you know, looking at those right now would be beneficial for you, because they might change substantially.
We're in a collective mode, and we're having task force and meetings and so forth, and there can be a few more before you start to...
Yes, definitely. I'm hoping, I mean, I don't want to take a chance here. It's, I think, once we get to that stage where these have been revised, we'd have a more public workshop, so everybody can take a look at the designs.
Still, Watson?
Yes, I thought that they said they were going to put them up for us to take closer looks at them on the town website.
Yeah, I'm, to be honest, after the last meeting, we had the long weekend, and I was really trying to get hold of the consultant to arrange an in-house meeting, and then somebody from the MetroCog, the project manager, he went to a conference, so I never got a chance to actually get together with the team first, before I put it up on the web. So, I'll get to it once everybody's available.
Okay. So, that'll come up in the near future. Anything else on Complete Streets? Otherwise, we'll go on to Coastal Resiliency Plan, which you want to talk about more next month, right?
Yes. I was hoping to get the program for public information out today, but unfortunately, I couldn't do it. I know that we only have a couple of meetings away before Pat decides to, you know, take, like, her term gets off, and she goes to another body, or zoning commission, or whatever commission she's interested in, I don't know.
I can't hear you.
But right now, my thing is, you all are familiar with the Coastal Resiliency Plan, you were part of the CRS process, and I would love to see this commission institute the program for public information, and approve it and adopt it, so that, you know, I don't, we're not starting from the scratch and reinventing the wheel, and starting, you know, again, taking another six months to bring everybody on board to implement the public information program. So, definitely, I'm looking into August meeting to bring that to here. I have to meet with our Communications Manager, Mike Downs, and talk to him about how best we can maximize our efforts to inform public, and, you know, improve coastal resiliency outreach in the town. So, once I talk to him, I will have something laid out, and I'll bring it to the meeting in August.
These, I assume essentially are, we're doing nothing more than implementing the recommendations that came out of the Resiliency...
No, this is different. I mean, that is different. There are two parts to it. One is the project's implementation, the physical implementation of mitigation projects on ground. The other is educating public, raising awareness, making sure that your people are prepared to overcome disasters. So, the second part is where we are falling short.
It is, it is in the report.
Yes.
Goes into quite detail about what we need to be doing in advance of actual shovel-in-the-ground kind of projects, that we need to start this safety, for nothing else, I'll call it a safety disaster program, using the resources we already have here. I assume that the outline sketch that I've been, that I've seen over the last couple of years, we're actually going to now formalize and implement it.
Exactly. And also, we are in the process of applying for a grant for analyzing the repetitive loss areas in the town, and we've been in conversation with FEMA on that, regarding, you know, obtaining some kind of assistance, funding assistance, so that we look at the 71 repetitive loss properties in the town, see how best we can mitigate those properties. And we are also, you know, John Casey, Town Engineer, applied for an application to mitigate flooding on the water pollution control facility in 2017, and we still haven't heard back whether we got funding from it, or from the application or not. So, today, just this afternoon, when I followed up, they said it's being considered for more review, and that they will have a conversation with DEEP regarding permitting requirements, so which is positive, at least they didn't shoot it down. So, things are happening, but not, you know, definitely not happening at the pace that we want it to happen.
May I add something to what, since we're doing resiliency at this point?
Yes.
I got an email from the Coastal Resiliency, CIRCA, from them. Next week, on the July 23rd, there is a Resilience Connecticut webinar specifically for planning and zoning people. It's essentially going through and showing how their new tools actually work. They suggested that it's particularly important for municipal staff, but that anybody who's working in planning would be very, would be very beneficial, because what it actually does is it shows you the multi-layers with the different scenarios, so that you can begin to understand it. I've gone through some of it, and some of it needs understanding. So, they're having a webinar that you can sign up for, if anybody is interested, I have the information here.
I think you emailed it out to us, did you not?
No, I interviewed, I sent you something else.
Oh, okay. If you could send that out to all of us, Mr. Watson? When you figure it out, if you...
If you recall, I mentioned at the last meeting, I think, that J and I presented at Connecticut, Resilient Connecticut Workshop, that was organized by CIRCA, and that's where they shared those layers with everyone, and we did take a look.
They actually say representatives from recent meetings with municipal staff, their perspectives will be included. So, you guys have been very proactive. I just think it'd be beneficial for us, so, all speaking the same language.
And I was also, I think J did this a few years ago, I'm going to do it again. This New England Chapter of Soil and Water Conservation Service has requested us to represent Stratford at their annual meeting in August, August 9th, at Stratford Point, where I will be again presenting on the Coastal Resiliency Plan for the town. So, trying to put it out there for as many people as we can, so that, you know, somebody might help us.
Good. Okay, so, I think we'll be busy with that at our next month's meeting. Moving on to other items, we have digital signs, draft ordinance, and Sismita has passed out a lot of stuff here, and I'm going to let her take over at this point.
Thank you. There's a lot to report on this, because I've been working slowly on this, how best to address the issue of legality associated with implementing an electronic message sign in the town. So, I contacted Old Saybrook. The town of Old Saybrook has a digital sign ordinance, and they have electronic message signs on their town-owned properties. So, I spoke to their zoning enforcement officer and the town planner, and both have been very valuable and informative. In fact, their zoning enforcement officer also offered to, you know, come or discuss her findings by phone call, if the commission is interested. I gave you a couple of copies here of their sign ordinance, and besides that, I also would like to mention that our town attorney, Alex Florrick, is also looking into the legality of this issue. He's been out for quite a few weeks. I think he was out for one or two weeks in July, because he was getting married, and he was away, and when he came back, it was too short of a time for him to work on this. But he said he will talk to their attorney, who helped Old Saybrook prepare their digital sign ordinance in the next few days, and find out what issues they encountered, and also research more on, you know, matters relating to First Amendment, such as, you know, if you're allowing only nonprofits to advertise, and not the commercial private property owners, are we breaking the First Amendment rule here? And that's something that we have to take into consideration. And so, the one, the pages that I gave you, the first set is Section 64 of Old Saybrook Regulations on Signs, and I don't expect you all to read it today here, but I just wanted to walk you through this quickly, so you understand what I'm trying to get here. This sign ordinance is for all signs in the town, but there is a particular section here, especially when you come to Section 64.4.7, where it talks about illumination for windows. Of course, that's not something that we are concerned about, but 64.5.2, it's on page 64, and it says electronic message sign, and they are actually permitting it everywhere, on any lot located in residence district. And it talks about the area, the height, support structure height, and internal illumination. This is for residence districts, that they have this ordinance. And I also wanted to bring your attention to page, actually, I don't have a page number here, but it's 64.6, Section on Prohibited Signs, where they talk about flashing signs, moving signs, vehicle signs being prohibited. And they also have standards on illumination under 68.1.5. And then, when you go under definitions on the following page, you talk, all the words that are addressed in the ordinance are described, like, what is a flashing sign, what is a sign-changeable message? So, I don't know if you want to go to this level of detail, but under definitions, if you look under sign municipal electronic message sign on page nine, the page number is to the right side, it says, "Any sign located on property owned by the town of Old Saybrook and used for municipal purposes that contain or consist of patterns of illumination which forms words, symbols, or other messages which are altered more than every five minutes." And I think, I like this definition better than what we tried to write in our own ordinance.
Where is page nine?
It's to the right-hand side corner, all the way, like, in your package, it's the last but one page, the one before the last page.
Oh.
And that's why I said, it's very confusing, so I wanted to walk you through this. But our definition that we started drafting said, every five seconds, the message changes. And we said something that, to the effect of a logo or an alphanumeric character on the sign. But after I read the Old Saybrook definition, I like this definition much better. It kind of specifies that, you know, we would use words, symbols, or messages, which means logos, numbers, or words. It specifies that it would be altered more than every five minutes, which gives enough time for a driver driving by to take a look at it, and if he decides to come back driving to look at the sign, he still can take a turn and come back and read it, and take, go back. Five seconds is too less of a time, and if you look at five minutes per message, you're looking at 10 to 12 messages per hour, which is not bad, yes.
May I interrupt? Clarification. So, this is Old Saybrook?
This is Old Saybrook.
So, we can go there and look?
I asked them to post pictures for us, and you could go and look if you're, you know, if you're going there, I would appreciate you to take a video and bring it back, not just a picture.
Okay, so, this includes stores?
They have everywhere.
Gas stations, everything?
They have everywhere, but this one, that you will be requested to look at, is on the town property. They have one at their town hall.
Okay.
So, we're looking specifically at page nine, signs municipal electronic message sign, that definition.
On the town property.
Municipal electronic message sign.
Thank you very much.
That section, Sismita is suggesting we use for the basis of our ordinance.
We'll do that.
Okay. Now, what is this?
Another thing is, their Planning Commission and their Zoning Commission are disagreeing on this, and their zoning commission literally, I think, was, I didn't get the exact summary of it, maybe they were going to file a lawsuit, or they filed a lawsuit and settled, I don't know. But based on, you know, their discussions, they clarified the definitions of changeable message sign and flashing sign, so this is the text that was changed. That's the last page that I gave. And so, if you see, previously, they had 10 minutes, and now, they have five minutes. So, they changed it to five minutes for municipal electronic message sign. And they explained very clearly what's a changeable message, and if you look at it under the definition of changeable message signs, they also refer the sources they got this from, like National Intelligence Transportation Systems Architecture, and National Electrical Manufacturers Association Standards Publications. So, these are really, you know, credible sources that they used to define these terms in their ordinance. I spoke to Alex again this afternoon. This is what I'm thinking. We have what we wrote in our draft, and we have to go back, relook at it from a fresh perspective, and say, we want a ground-mounted sign, we don't want a flashing sign, we want something that illuminates just enough, not too bright, not too low, like, you know, the colors that Old Saybrook used were mostly red and green during Christmas, or other times, it's, I think, just white or red. So, red, I guess. So, maybe decide on the colors, and decide on how long the message would be displayed. I think it should not be less than five minutes. Allow only nonprofits, no commercial private property owners, and must be ground-mounted, cannot be pole-mounted, must not occupy more than 50% of the sign coverage to make it look aesthetic, and must be on two locations only, which is West Broad Green and Paradise Green. So, these are our criteria by which we should frame our ordinance. And if Alex takes care of the legal aspect of this, then I will schedule a meeting with the town attorney and the mayor's office, and walk through this draft, before I come back to our next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, so, we have to get an answer from the town attorney before we can go anywhere with this, but I do think Sismita's recommendation and summary is a good suggestion as to how we proceed next month.
Okay, so, just for clarification in my mind, we have, we're looking at page nine in terms of town, and these are primarily nonprofits, unless the town wants to put something up, emergencies or whatever. And five minutes is the minimum?
Maximum.
Maximum?
Five minutes is the maximum.
Now, is it one screen, or are going to be multiple?
It'll be just one screen, and it'll be just rolling by the message. And so, the same message plays for five minutes, over and over, until a new message comes up.
Does it roll, or does it just come up and stay?
I think we're not talking about flashing, so I'm sorry.
It would just stay up.
It'll just stay there for five minutes, and then you get a new message after five minutes.
So, for five minutes, it will say Blues on the Beach is July 20th. That's our beach, or whatever else. Okay? And then, after five minutes, if that's what we choose to do, then it'll come up with, Latin Music Festival is September 15th.
Okay, so, they obviously have a study that has been done to know when somebody drives by or stops at a light, what it takes for them to get that intake along.
Yes, more than a study that I would rely on, I would rely on their practical experience. I asked them specifically, did you have any problems with your drivers? Did you have any accidents? Were there any challenging situations? And I said no.
I don't think, see, people are going to drive forward, do a U-turn, or take a left, and a left, and a left, and come back, and go back and look at the sign.
No, they won't, but there is a signal there, near Paradise Green, so does West Broad Street. So, when people sitting at the signal take a look at the sign, they will be able to read the message if it stays long enough. If it's five seconds, it'll just blink and go.
Five seconds, probably.
Okay.
Five seconds probably too quick. I don't know if five minutes are the answer, but that we can discuss. But, you know, like I said, that could be something that, the amount of time we can discuss. Their practical experience is that five minutes is fine. The other thing is, we're all creatures of habit, we tend to drive the same places. So it's same like the billboards on I-95. You may see something one time you drive by, and the next day when you drive by, it's something else, you know. So you, over time, you see all of them.
Can we put this ordinance in place and not define the time, and maybe get a beta test?
I would define the time for two reasons. One is to give a clarity to who is implementing this. The second is to limit the number of messages per hour. I heard from Old Saybrook that the number of requests could be long. And they had to literally screen, you know, the messages to see which ones can be displayed. We don't want to end up in a situation, we have two hundred people wanting to put messages on the sign, and not one is clearly interpreted by the audience because it doesn't stay long enough. So we only want those that are most important to the town to be screened. And that's another thing, too, how would we do this? I mean, I like the definition that says it's for municipal purposes only. So automatically, you have taken off the private property interest there. But even at municipal purposes, if there are, like, more than ten people or twenty people wanting to put messages, how do we do it? And what's the, what's the amount of time that each message gets displayed? Like, how many months? Those are the things that I need to discuss with the town attorney.
I think they have, I thought I saw somewhere where they have a number that they can have at any one time.
I think ninety or something.
I don't remember, I thought I saw it somewhere where, you know, it goes through. Maybe there's five of them that go through every five minutes or six. I thought I saw it somewhere. But that we can also decide, and then it could be done on a first come, first served basis. Or you could have it on one sign. I'm sorry?
Will this be brought up again next month?
Oh, yeah, we're going to discuss it more fully because we have to wait for the decision from the town attorney.
Okay.
And he hasn't issued that yet.
Here that decision, I'll take a write-up.
Yes, what?
Old Saybrook.
Uh-huh. You're going to take a write?
Oh, yeah, I'll do a little more research.
Okay, that's, that's good, that's good. And also, to be honest, attorneys are very wary of digital signs because the town will be liable if something happens to a driver while driving and, you know, they stop to look at the sign and they crash.
Well, aren't we liable now if they look at an A-frame and crash?
That's a good question.
Are we liable?
So I have to talk to the town attorneys more on this.
Bottom line, I think we have some homework to go through.
Good.
You can go look at Old Saybrook, and we'll hopefully get an answer from the town attorney for our August meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for all of this. Okay, text amendment is on the table, unless somebody wants to take it off, we'll keep on going. MetroCog bike share?
I have an update on that. So I've been working with Metropolitan Council of Governments on this to get the regional bike share implemented, that program implemented in the town of Stratford. They prepared a draft request for information that is, you know, currently being reviewed by all six towns of MetroCog, including us. And the comments are due next Monday. And essentially, what the draft request for information does is it asks interested vendors who want to put bikes for public use in the town to provide more information on, you know, how many bikes they can put at what time, and, you know, what locations we prefer, what their experience has been like, how to secure them, things that are, you know, general questions that need to be asked and answered. And then, once the interested vendors send back their request for information forms completed, the town screens those and selects a preferred vendor. And once a preferred vendor is selected, they enter into a contract, and that's when, you know, we can start a pilot program. I hoped that we could have done this, I had hoped to get it done this summer. But unfortunately, you know, pilot program would mean we would need at least six months at a minimum. And we are almost into midsummer, and by the time we enter into a contract, it'll be early fall. So what's the point of having a pilot program in the winter where we are, you know, setting ourselves up for failure and not clearly monitoring the usage? So this might, the mayor is very interested in it, so this might begin sometime early spring next year.
Yeah, we'll talk to you tonight, huh? Well, you know, this, this has been, two things, the digital signage and this have been on my mind a lot. The, I'm wondering if we put the cart before the horse. It would be great, I go down to Charlotte, North Carolina, and other places, and it's like, it's amazing what goes on in these metropolitan areas, and smaller towns outside them also. And, but the, do we have a print, a blueprint, so to speak, of where they will be? And where the end will be, and how far are people going to arrive?
Right now, the mayor agreed for six locations as the pilot project, with each location having roughly five to six bikes, so.
Prior to the roads being?
Sorry?
Prior to the roads being completed?
Yes, I mean, I think this will end up being around the same time. If we are looking at early spring next year, and if they are putting in, the designs are completed by December this year, and they're implementing something early spring next year, it's probably concurrently going to happen, but.
They also have a liability.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking at, what kind of insurance they have and the liability policy and everything.
Thank you very much.
Are the six locations on our planned greenways?
We haven't come that far yet. I think when we get to that, but I don't know, I mean, there's another thing. I'm very concerned about the Greenway Committee, or in fact, any committee of the town is, you don't have their contact information online, and you don't know when a meeting is being canceled or when it is happening.
I agree.
And I know that we are due to have one more meeting in a month or a month and a half, but I have no idea where it's happening, when it's happening, who to contact. I mean, with great difficulty, when I sent the Complete Streets minutes of the workshop, I could get the emails of all the relevant boards and commissions, and I saved in my address book. But I think, you know, we need to do a better job. When you're doing public service, public should be able to access you, you know.
Yeah, that is a subcommittee technically of the Planning Commission. Now, Mr. Watson, you're our liaison with the Complete Stri, not.
As of this past month.
And Greenway, both of them.
As of this past month.
Oh, so you're not anymore?
Well, I was, only as of this past month.
No, we assigned you as the Planning Commission, and therefore, you are a member of the Greenway Committee because that's a subcommittee of this. So in other words, we appoint the Greenway Committee. So when we appointed you, you were on that committee.
Yes.
Now.
But I'm not the chair of that meeting.
You're not what?
I'm not the chair of that meeting.
That's correct. And I know there was an issue as to whether you got the information, but I thought last month it was official that you were getting the information.
Yes, but I haven't gotten any information about anything else. As, my understanding is they meet every three months.
Right.
And we didn't, we didn't have the last month, the last one. And I asked the town engineer, he had no clue either, and nobody knew if the meeting was happening or not.
You are, you are, this discussion is proper, it needs to be had. Rules need to be laid down for the, for the Greenway Committee. There are lots of things that I would love to see, I'd love to see bikers on that committee. I'd love to see walkers on that committee. There are lots of questions to ask about how can we invigorate this committee?
I'm not criticizing, all I'm trying to say is, at the very least, if we knew a meeting is being canceled or it's happening, then we can put these items on the agenda and discuss.
Well, there's, even as a subcommittee, they're still supposed to follow all of the committee rules.
So they have to do the posting on the town clerk?
They, they have to post it, if they don't, then it's an illegal meeting.
Right.
Okay, so I didn't know if it was canceled and it was posted.
Who's the chair now?
Lynda Peppin.
Okay.
Who was that?
Lynda Peppin.
So if somebody can talk to her, because when we come to that stage where we have to choose six locations, I'd be happy to bring that to Greenway Committee to discuss that.
Okay, I'll talk to Lynda Peppin, because we've had discussions on this before as far as being open and having meetings, because until recently, I think it was almost a year before they had a meeting. So now, at least they've had a couple in six months.
I mean, it's okay, if you have nothing to discuss on agenda, there's no reason why you should meet. But then, you should let people know that it's not happening.
Well, we're now, we're getting back to why I suggested that we meld the Complete Streets project with, with the Greenway, because it's really one and the same in terms of the Greenway. That, that it took a while for that to kind of start happening. But I think you're absolutely right that the Greenway, if we're going to speed up what we're doing, then we really do need to. But I also think that they have cultural memory because they, there are members on there who go back ten, fifteen years with all the plans that have been expressed for the Greenway all over town for many, many, many. Our first Greenway was nineteen seventy-nine. So there have been plans for greenways all over town that some people think of that these are still happening, other people don't even know about them.
Exactly, and I was talking to Jay Hibansky a little bit about this, and I said, you know what? If we have the opportunity and the time, this is something we need to explore and go back to the drawing board again, do one more of phase two of Greenway planning, just to educate and bring people to the meetings and, you know.
And before we start replanning, I think what we really need to do is to take all of the plans that we've paid for and done over the years. Because a lot of them are mapped right on top of each other. And so there's been already so much work done that we shouldn't.
We don't want to overdo it. Mr. Staley, you had a question?
Yes, I would be happy to assist as an alternate with Mr. Watson. Or on that, I spoke with Joe Vexy for many years on this.
Oh, yeah.
When the stumps were coming out over behind the water pollution plant. I knew Jack Joe for, well, twenty years. So if you do need any help, I would be willing to assist in any way.
Well, to make it official, we have to have a vote to add you as a alternate to the Greenway.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to add Mr. Staley as an alternate to the?
I move we add Mr. Staley as an alternate.
Thank you. Any further discussion, if hearing none?
Trouble, you did.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Nobody opposed, so it passes unanimously. So when I speak with Lynda Peppin, I will also tell her that you are a alternate on the Greenway Committee.
And I'm familiar with the law.
The law?
Well, yes, I could attend and not speak.
Unless called on, yeah. Okay, that's fine, but right now, they should, I know they were very good there for a while, having meetings every three months. Then there was at least a year, this probably was when I first got on planning, and they hadn't met for a while. Whether there was anything to be on the agenda, I don't know, but, and then we had a meeting with Lynda Peppin, I think that, and money came through, and things happened to get it started. So we need to make sure that they meet their obligations as far as FOI and meeting requirements, yes.
In fairness to the committee, I, it has been a bit of a transition because of the Elm Street project and then Complete Street projects. They were both two different projects that although they're, they connect with each other, they were handled in very different ways. And so they became much more project-driven versus the whole, versus holding the knowledge for the whole system, network across town, which I think should go back to being part of their major. What they're looking at is they should be the ones responsible, not just for individual projects, but also keeping the knowledge of what is our network that we're talking about. Because they've already done so much work in terms of researching where our sidewalk network, where our safe travel at school is, where our, you know, all of those kind of networks that need to be developed if we were to have a true multimodal system in Stratford.
Okay, so we'll work on, on that part and making sure Mr. Staley gets acknowledged as being appointed. Okay, discussion of Shakespeare property, any update?
We just had one last task force meeting last week, and it was successfully attended by many who participated in the workshops. As you know, we had five community workshops across the town, and significant community outreach was done through online social media, and then there was an online survey. So we had seven hundred people participate in the discussions. And also, we believe that there are many more who might have actually participated by sending us letters and emails expressing what their interests are and vision is of the property. So the next step is to actually present it before the redevelopment agency, which we're doing like, I think, on Thursday this week. And then after that, it'll go to the town council. I think the mayor's going to present it to the town council, and they will discuss next steps. So that's it, and.
And our letter was also presented.
Yes, it was presented, it was part of all the letters that we received on behalf of boards and commissions in the town, and it's, it's on file.
Any questions? Now, that's still, whatever plan, would still come back to the Planning Commission?
Yes, it will at some point.
Yeah.
I mean, when a developer comes in, definitely.
Okay. All righty, the next one is amendment to section twelve, all-street parking regulations.
I have a lot of copies here, and I didn't want to send it as a package because it's, again, very confusing, so I'm going to distribute them. The first one that I'm passing along is an amendment to the Stratford all-street parking regulations that Jay Hibansky worked on a few years ago. He brought it before the commission here, and he never, I'm sorry, excuse me. And he never had the time to actually, you know, get back to the commission again and get it approved. Today, we are discussing this because it's the need of the hour, and there's so much happening in the town. Complete Streets is going to happen pretty quickly. Developments are coming up on Barnum Avenue, Lottship Boulevard, and whenever we are looking at applications, especially, for example, quite recently, we looked at an application on Sydney Street and East Main. And we were like, a restaurant was proposed that was required to have forty-one spaces of parking, even though it was a drive-thru. And compared to any other town, the same restaurant is required to have more in this town because of the parking regulations that are not consistent with the urban fabric, you know, the urban need. So, and also, our parking regulations do not address bike parking at all. So if a person decides to ride a bike and go somewhere, there is no place designated for that person to park their bike. We researched a lot on this, and I'm bringing this before you again in hope that, I mean, this is one of the things that the commission could make a difference in the town by doing this right away. I mean, when you change those parking regulations, you are actually making it more pedestrian-oriented, complete streets-oriented, which is the vision of our Plan of Conservation and Development along these commercial corridors like Barnum Avenue. So I'm passing these copies for you, and I'll read out, I'll spell out where the amendments are being proposed. First one is the Stratford proposed amendments. And then I have a communication from Jay Hibansky to Richford Ed, the zoning. from Jay Hibansky to Richfordet, the zoning commission chair on parking, which I'm passing along again, the email that was sent, and please pass, take one and pass it on. This goes with this. And then I also have a, a chart, I would say a table, that compares Stratford's parking with neighboring towns like Milford, Shelton, and West Haven. And I also took Hartford as an example, because Hartford's parking regulations are very well-written, and it's been, you know, in our planning community, people see it as a leader, because, you know, they have significantly reduced their off-street parking, and also, off-street parking requirements, and also, they have maximums per lot instead of minimums, which caps the amount of parking that can go on a lot at any given time. So please take one and pass it on. I'll take one, too. And then I have the actual Hartford regulations on the bicycle parking section of it, which I will pass on. I have kept one copy for myself, but please take one and pass it on. It's this one, too. It's a lot of paper, like I said, and I will walk you through everything, and maybe this is not something that we can come to a conclusion today, but at least after I explain, you can go back and research, and then we can bring it back for discussion next month. And the last one is sustainable land use regulations developed by Capital Region Council of Governments for their forty towns. They have thirty-eight towns, to be precise, under the jurisdiction, and in this, they have laid out suggested parking standards for towns, which I think is, you know, even applicable for Stratford, because most of those towns are similar, like Stratford operates in terms of parking. So what I'm trying to get at here is, if you open the table that I have passed on, for example, when you look at Stratford, for one and two-family residences, it says one space per dwelling unit. If you compare that with Hartford, the last column, it still has one space per dwelling unit, but then when there is a zoning lot, it says maximum four spaces per zoning lot. And I'm more than residential, I, I would look at the other items here, like the TOD district, for example, where you have restaurants. Let's take the example of restaurants, clubs, taverns, and bars. Our regulation is based on the square feet, whereas the Stratford regulation is based on the number of people using the space, like maximum three spaces for every five persons, based on maximum capacity of the restaurant. Now, I want to.
I'm not sure.
It's this table here.
We're not sure which one we're on.
Restaurants, it's, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh one from the top, and I'm comparing Stratford with Hartford. And Shelton is also based on the number of seats, and also, it's a combination of both, number of seats and the square feet, whereas ours is based on the land area, the square feet. Now, in this table, on the second page, there are a couple of recommended items listed under Stratford. These were developed by Jay Hibansky a while ago, and those recommended are highlighted in this section, the word document that I passed on that said Stratford proposed amendments. So if you look at the recommended part under schools, there was nothing recommended in our ordinance, and now it's clearly defined in the proposed amendment, what the requirement is for the schools. Like, at the end of the page, it says for schools, one space per every three seats.
In the end, you have.
Yes, yes. If you don't want to go through the, you know, if you think you need more time to decide on the bicycle parking and the other sections where we want to put a maximum cap instead of a minimum cap on parking, at the very least, I request you all to look at what the recommended sections are on this table, and see if it is acceptable to you as highlighted in the word document, and just, you know, approve that, so that we can immediately have regulations in place for users that are not accounted for in our ordinance right now. And then keep working on the other ones, and, you know, this is a lot to take in, and maybe we need to break it down and say, okay, first, let's tighten up all our retail spaces, like Burlington has so much parking here, but it's underutilized, that whole lot. We can't, anything you do right now will not change what exists, but if anything new is planning to come on these lots, you're making sure that, you know, you're not having an overflow of parking, parking facing the street. The memorandum that Jay sent to Richfordet also explains how he wants to position parking on surface parking lots, and a diagram that is attached on the second page that shows that, you know, we recommend parking to the rear and not in the front of the buildings, and also requiring that not just in TOD, but everywhere, so that there is a village feel to the Stratford's retail corridors. So please take a look at these three, and in addition to that, the, the easy, low-hanging fruit is to include additional bicycle parking regulations. So the Hartford regulations that I passed on, under page two, you have bicycle parking requirements. Hartford has more detailed bicycle requirements, because their population is higher, and their density is higher, and there are more people riding bikes in Hartford compared to Stratford. So I don't foresee just taking these as ease into Stratford's ordinance, but there are a couple of sections where I like how they spell it out, how they want electric charging stations on some surface parking lots, and there's also this section here where, you know, it describes where the bicycle parking actually applies for in the town, and that's something to consider, to take a look at, along with the last piece that I sent, which is the Capital Region Council of Governments suggested regulations. And this is the most simple, most basic bicycle regulation, if you want to, you know, incorporate, on page twenty-nine of this. It starts from page twenty-five, but page twenty-nine.
Slow down one second. Where are we? In what document?
Capital Region, the last document, Capital Region Recommended Regulations.
Thank you.
And their page number's starting from twenty-five. If you go to twenty-nine, there's a small section on bicycle parking that says, "Developments shall provide at least one bicycle rack, locker, or other bicycle parking facility designed to accommodate parking spaces for at least four bicycles, plus additional or larger facilities designed to accommodate parking spaces for at least two additional bicycles for each ten vehicle parking spaces, over twenty parking spaces in the TOD core sub-district." So, something like this, not the same thing, but something like this, for Stratford's commercial corridors, if we can implement bicycle parking. The regional bike share would, coupled with the complete streets, and the bicycle parking regulations would have a, you know, maximum impact on how we want the town to function as a pedestrian-oriented community, and something to provide a village feel to the town. So this is a lot, and I couldn't have explained this through my transmitter, definitely, so I brought everything here, so I can walk you through this.
Okay, why don't we break this down a little bit, so that it, we take it a chunk at a time?
Okay.
Let's start off with the chart, if you, if you would bear with me, the second page, where it says recommended, under the Stratford column. And the first one is health clubs and gyms. Now, it doesn't say what we currently have.
There's nothing.
There's nothing, okay.
So we're putting.
So this is something new.
Which one? On second page?
Second page, health clubs slash gym.
Off the table.
Fourth one down, okay? We all on the same page? Currently, we have nothing. In Milford, it's one space per fifty square feet. Shelton, it's one space for three hundred square feet. West Haven has no separate standard, and Hartford has, in accordance with special permit review, or a special permit required in accordance with site plan review, okay? What Jay, right, you are suggesting, is that for health clubs and gym, one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet? So it's more than Milford, less than Shelton, if you want to do a comparison. How do people, people feel about that right now?
Well, that's fifty square feet, less than the other.
Less than Shelton. It's, I mean, Milford is one space for fifty square feet.
Yeah.
So it's kind of in, a little less than Shelton, not really in the middle, but, but at least we would have something.
One space for one hundred and fifty.
No, one space for two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, so if you have a thousand-square-foot lot, you have four spaces there.
What I am reading is this Stratford Proposed Amendments Off-Street Parking. I'm on the last page, and it compares to the recommended on the chart, okay?
Health clubs and gyms.
Yes. So is everybody on the same page?
Pages.
Or pages, yes. So the recommendation from the staff is one space for every two hundred square feet for health clubs and gyms. Yes?
And your logic?
To reduce the parking, or, you know, surface parking lots, like, you don't need as much. People come, they exercise, they go. Why do you need one for every fifty square feet? That's a lot, if you look at a thousand-square-foot lot. At the same time, slightly lower than Shelton, because usually for restaurants, too, we do one for two fifty, the two fifty benchmark.
Well, this is health clubs now.
Yeah, but generally, restaurants are also similar, where people come, they eat, they go. Gyms are also the same.
So I, I'm seeing a lot more lately, the, where I go, that there's a lot of signage up in parking lots. You can only park here for so-and-so, this is our parking space, and it's usually in the larger lots, where there's multiple. And so if you're doing equivalent of one fifty, is it going to be designated to them?
Two fifty, two hundred.
Two fifty.
Yes, and also, the intent is to introduce bicycle parking, so more people bike. So when you do both, and that will be a good impact, because now, you don't, even if you don't have enough parking, those who can ride the bike will use the bicycle parking spaces.
When we allowed the LA Fitness and Edge to move into their current spaces, was there any regulation as to how many parking spaces they had to have?
I have to check that. I don't know off the top of my head, but maybe it was part of special permit review or development review.
Okay. Now, if we were to accept this, would those two properties fit this recommendation?
Yes, but there will be no change in how they are right now. Zoning amendments impact future uses, not current uses.
Correct, but we have two examples of usage that we can use as an example of whether or not two hundred and fifty square feet is too much or too little. That's the reason for my question.
Okay.
So if they have it currently, and everything is fine, then I don't see a problem with the recommendation. If it, if that doesn't match now, what is the, you know?
Now, that's some homework that I need to do. I will go back, get you a prototype in the town for each of those recommended. Let's start, like you said, from the basic. First, those that we clearly want to include in the ordinance.
Right.
And then the next step is to amend those that are having overflow parking, and just cut it down. And then also, along with that, the bicycle parking standards. So I will go back, look at LA Fitness, their square footage, how many parking spaces they were allowed, and how many are there being currently used right now, and then come back. There are only quite a few here, like one, two, three, four, five, six. So it's fair, by the next commission meeting, that's an easy catch. Like, high school, we have the center school development, not high school, but in general, the schools. So we can take that as a comparison. For convenience markets, I have to look at an example that was recently approved, and I'll come back with the homework.
So, to make it more convoluted, when you have a large parking lot, and, just like, for example, anyway, Stop and Shop and Shop with the Edge, and there's a kitchen place there, everybody's going, we buy products, and a wine place, and they all share a parking lot. So if somebody wanted to go in there, how would they define if they can or not in square foot, if they're foot-sized?
Well, they make use of the shared parking regulation of the town, and the town has a shared parking regulation. So I know that we did an architectural review board application for a Chipotle, a Starbucks, and a self-storage facility on Sydney Street, and that's where, you know, they clearly had marked, this development will have these many spaces, and this is, this portion of the site. And no matter how much you designate, there are people who always park everywhere. There's no much, not much enforcement being done there, because they don't have officers to put tickets, and they cannot be ticketed either, and towing is not something that they would do there to the customers often. So it's just, you know, it's just courtesy that people park in the designated spaces, but when there's no parking, and the other retail has enough parking, people always park there.
Now, you indicated there was some, not urgency on this, or how urgent is it for us to go through this?
I think by next meeting, let's strike off the bare minimums, like, those that don't have parking in the regulation right now.
So the recommended.
And I will need an official petition from our zoning commission representative, which is Jay Hibansky, saying, we request planning commission to review this and come back. So if you all agree, I, I want to put two items for review. One is those that are recommended as new in the table, and also include a section on bicycle parking, which is not there currently in the regulation. And then the next phase, yes.
Parking of bicycle regulation, what, you can have those bars or?
Bike racks.
Bike racks along sidewalk areas, back?
Not along the sidewalks, but in the parking lots, you could have designated bike parking spaces. So I will write up something, like a short paragraph for Stratford, that can be incorporated into the ordinance, and then we can talk about that. Please review what I have given to you, and if you want to have, we can't meet as a commission before, that's the problem, but if you want, if you have any questions individually, you can reach out to me, and I can set a separate time to sit down and talk with you on these. I'm hoping that by August, we should have something adopted, at least for those that are recommended new, and the bicycle parking. And then September, let's take a look at the, you know, regulation more closely for retail, and see, are we requesting more than enough for retail uses? Because I feel like, if you look at this map here, this MetroCog has made, I didn't pass it on, but there's a lot of parking, and people complain of parking. There's a lot of parking in and around the town center, and some lots are being used, some are underutilized. Like, I, there are some lots that I look around from home, that could fairly reduce the amount of parking required on-site, and especially now, you want your main street to function as a complete street. You have to make it more transit-oriented, less of. You have to make it more transit-oriented, less auto-sense. And if you have more parking, then more cars will come, and less bike pedestrian usage.
I've seen, I thought I read in the past where Stratford, the town of Stratford, was looking at a parking facility?
A garage?
Yes. For cars?
I don't know, I have no idea about it.
I know West Haven, or West Hartford, they did that. And they put up meters, it paid for itself.
The last time that a parking garage was discussed was in conjunction with the center school property. And I think it's fair to say that the public shot that down.
Really?
That would be my.
And the rear?
Yes. And before that, it was discussed at the railroad station, which I think was, people were more accepting of that. And for, but for some reason, they built a parking lot and not a parking garage. Which I still don't know. I am not aware of why they did that. But I do know, those are the two examples of parking garages that I am familiar with. I don't know if anybody else has any other information.
It works quite well in West Hartford.
Well.
Well, the third plan for a parking garage was to essentially extend the platform of the current terrain, and put it over where the old valleys used to be.
I'm not sure that was ever formally.
It was, actually, it was in a plan that in 2010 or something of that sort.
Yeah, but valleys is not, valleys is private property.
That was the problem, is the state tried to move the owner, and there was no interest from the owner.
So we can discuss parking garages if you want to, but it.
No, I'm gonna, I'll just do a little side thing.
Okay, I don't know what that is, but. So we can, we should be able to knock out the section on recommended on the chart.
Can I get clarity? Recommended, it's only those five items?
Six items.
The six items?
Yes.
And the other ones, are they, do they represent change? Because I know we worked on all of these.
Oh, we worked on a lot of this, yeah.
That's what Jay mentioned too, and I'm bringing it back now, now that we.
Because we had redlined documents that we had, he had done a lot of charts and everything else that we had spent at least a year on, it seems like.
I think it's about time we take action on it. I mean, I would bring back.
My assumption is this represents the changes where we stopped working.
No, not yet, because I think some lots should have a maximum cap. When you say minimum, minimum means they can put any amount on that lot, but, you know, based on the size, if you say maximum, you're limiting. After a certain point, you're saying, you're not having more parking than this. And that helps in and around this town center, especially.
I find developers go more to the minimum than to the maximum. In other words, they don't want more parking. They want more.
No, maximum doesn't mean that they're allowed to put maximum spaces. Maximum means that if you're square, you're, if you're saying one for 250 square feet, that's minimum. If it's a 10,000-square-foot structure, you could have, like, as many, like.
250 into 10,000.
Yeah, but when you're saying, even though it's one for 250 square feet, after 6,000 square feet, the maximum amount of spaces will be capped at this much. So you're capping your parking. You're not saying that, you know, you're going to have more on that lot. And that's a decision you make based on the location and the surrounding transit infrastructure. So if, for example, if you take the Burlington lot, if we did one for 250 square feet, and based on that calculation, we might have arrived at how many other parking spaces there on that lot. But if we had capped it, and said, not more than 30 spaces for this lot, then all the rest of the area could have been used for developable land.
True, but I would think when Burlington or Grand Union, which is what it was, was put there, it was required to have so much parking per square footage, or per something.
That was minimum, and they had no cap. There was no point where they said, okay, this is the cap, and beyond this, we don't need it.
Okay, because more developers are going to go right to the cap.
At that time, you didn't have bike pedestrian infrastructure.
Well, that's true.
And now you will have bike pedestrian infrastructure.
I think.
Now you'll have bike parking.
Bikes, but.
And transit. So that makes the difference here, for asking for the cap. Saying that, the reason we are saying that after 100 spaces or 50 spaces, you can't have more, is because we want people to use the bikes, and we have bike parking. And that's an incentive for those who can come on bikes. And you have pedestrian paths, you have, you know, transit. And that's, that's all as a package.
Yeah, it's a chicken and the egg issue, though. Yes, Mr. Watson?
Maybe this is an old conversation that I'm not remembering, but why couldn't, on some of these, we consider occupancy? Doesn't the gym, all the gyms have total occupancy for the building?
Yes.
Is that much greater than, or say, 2/3 of occupants?
They do have occupancy, and again, like I said, I can't take gym as an example, but I'll give you a very simple example. There was a guy who came to our office for putting a takeout restaurant at the very beginning. I know that they might have changed the regulation right now, I don't know. He was required at least five or six spaces, or more, I think, for the takeout, which is like, less than 1,000 square feet. And I'm like, how many people would come to a takeout that is less than 1,000 square feet that would require six to nine spaces? That's an overkill. You just need, like, one handicap and two or three spaces. That's the max.
I do remember, that was one of the ones we changed.
One of the ones we changed.
I think it was changed, or something, that's what I said.
Yeah.
And then, after that.
You're asking to change it again?
No, I'm just giving it as an example of some uses where the requirement is more than enough, and where we can actually cut back a little bit.
Okay, because like, drive-in restaurants, one space per hundred.
One other comment question?
Yes.
Under one- and two-family residences, it says one space per dwelling. How do we end up there? Are we talking, we're not talking about the driveway, we're only talking about the street parking?
No, it's off-street. One space per dwelling unit. That's in the regulation, I think.
Yeah, that's the.
Mm-hmm, that's the standard.
I had this discussion.
I know, but it immediately, when you compare it to all the other towns.
And when Hartford says zoning lot, their density is higher, so they're looking at the, you know, a different arrangement of these uses. I don't think we have that situation here. It'll be like, one per one.
But for our homework purposes, we're going to look at those six recommended items on number, on the second page. And the recommended is in the off-street parking proposed regulations.
And then also look at the bike parking, at least, at the very least, the Capital Region ones guidance, if not the Hartford.
Six are we looking at?
Only the recommended.
Only the recommended.
So all the others are currently in effect?
No. The couple, yes, yes and no. Let me keep it very simple for you. Yes, in the sense that there are some that I would still like to change, but not at this point.
So for our purposes, we have gone through these. We did make some recommendations. And until Susmita comes back and says we want to change them again, they're off the table. We're just getting recommended.
For now, the recommended and the bike parking.
Right.
What is the other document, just so I'm clear?
The other.
Capital Region.
Capital Region for the bike parking.
Okay.
Page 29. Page 29, Harold.
And if you have questions, please do not hesitate to email me or call me. And I think definitely the chair and I should meet at some point before the meeting to go through this again.
The other part of the bicycle parking would be within the Hartford regulations on page 225. So those are the two areas that, from a bicycling perspective, we're going to concentrate on. And there's other things we're going to get to on parking, but for next month, if we can get that out of the way, then we will have accomplished. Because as I recall, the last time we did this, I think we met maybe four or five meetings going over and over and over.
Yes, and I think it will be better if we had Dan Seft too, when we're having this discussion. Because now we come back, and then if we want to vote, Dan will be out of the lead.
Hopefully, yeah.
I have one last item to add, if you can waive the rules.
Well, is there any other question on what your homework is?
The bicycle regulations are in Hartford, under the Hartford regulation piece?
Hartford, page 225.
And also under Capital Region.
What page is the Capital?
That's just.
Okay.
29?
Oh, this one here, oh, okay, I'm sorry. This is the wrong document.
Page 29.
Which one is the Hartford? Oh, oh, okay, 70.
Okay?
Yeah.
All righty. Now, you want to add another? Want us to waive the rules?
To amend the application form for subdivision plant review.
Could I have a motion to waive the rules to discuss the subdivision application form?
I move we waive the rules, discuss subdivision application for. What exactly is it?
Okay, can I have a second? To waive the rules?
We don't know yet.
We're waiving the rules to discuss the subdivision application review form and rules.
Second.
Second.
To discuss the subdivision application.
Yes, to waive the rules to discuss it.
To discuss the application itself.
Yes. Okay, so we have a first, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so. Okay, Susmita, you want to walk us?
Yes, so the form that I have passed on is a current form for subdivision application. And if you see on this form, there is nowhere an owner can leave his email address or phone number. And there is no place for an applicant to write their narrative of the project in a concise form. That's the developer's agent, but not the owner. And, and under requirements and procedure for subdivision application, we don't specify that we would need a deed, and we would need zone development standards. So now I'm passing on the new form that I created to include some of these and make it simple for us, because oftentimes, we get these applications, and even though we require a written statement, an applicant forgets to enclose a written statement, and we don't know what's happening with the application. And we end up chasing the applicant to the point that, you know, the application would be considered incomplete without the written narrative of the project. So please take one and, you know, pass it on. This is the new form that I created.
We're looking at a revision of 1956?
Just revising this form format to include some more details on the subdivision application.
Yes.
And I just passed on the new form right now, which will, you can see that I introduced a table on the first page, that asked for property owners' phone number, email, fax number, along with the developer information that's already on the current form. Everything else is the same. On the second page, I introduced a small box that says project description, where an applicant is required to write in a very concise manner what they're proposing to do. And also, some elements of engineering, like, is it served by public utility infrastructure or not? Right off the bat, to know whether it's served or not, which we have to, you know, when we investigate the application, that's when we come to know whether there is electric service or sanitary source. But right now, the applicant will check this off right away. And also, under the requirements, I made few things bold, because they're an absolute must to have for the application, like having 13 copies of the plat, out of which five can be on 11-by-17 sheets. And they must be folded as 8-by-12, because we don't have time to fold applications for each applicant. And collated, have zone development standards on each application. And they have, they must have a statement of intent, a written form explaining what their intent is to do. Besides the short description on the application, a digital copy of the application, a deed, and a written statement. I can't, I thought I said a deed, yeah. The deed is under bullet two, copy of the property deed. Yes, one copy. So these are the changes. And besides that, on page four, I introduced one other item under whether a property is located or not in a flood zone, having the flood zone designation and the flood insurance rate map panel number. Because as a CRS community, we are supposed to track what we are allowing on our floodplains. And when we look at an application, we know right off, this is something that we need a copy for our CRS file, without us having to go backlog and, you know, dig all the information from the applications. So if you're okay with this, one other item I thought on page five, utilization of solar energy. Almost every time I encounter an application, nobody fills this form, and the application looks like it's incomplete. I was, you know, having this dilemma of whether we should keep it or not, because our regulations require them to provide something like that. But as of now, I just thought I would leave it this way, and, you know, see if we can encourage applicants to actually fill this before they submit it. So that's it.
So I have one question. The flood zone, is it a, is it the flood zone determined by FEMA, or is it like, A? Or is there a certain part of the zone?
No, it's FEMA flood zone designation. It can be found on online flood maps. If you just go online and type your property address, you would know which flood zone.
There's different designations of flood zones.
And that depends on the property address.
Okay.
So it's A, or A, or B, or V, or X.
Still want to know it?
Yes.
Okay.
Just out-of-the-box question. Will this be in a digital, fillable form on the website?
We don't have digital, fillable forms for any of our applications. We have PDFs that can be printed and filed, because we need 13 copies anyway. And we don't have that facility where people can fill it. But they can use a PDF writer to write on the PDF.
The reason why I bring it up, when you get into the project description, if they have to write that in in their handwriting, it's possible we won't be able to read their handwriting.
Typically, what they do is they type it in PDF writer, and print it out, and give it to us.
If they're a PDF writer.
It's a, it's a typeable PDF.
Yes.
You can actually open it as a typeable.
It is fillable, but it's just a different. Okay, I'm just concerned about handwriting. Mine's terrible.
The, I can't, I always got it wrong. The four, the wetland, the wastewater, the stormwater permit requirement that I believe now we're starting to ask, is that included in this in any way?
The application will only allow us to know if it is having public utility infrastructure or not. But when they submit the site plan drawings along with this, that's where we would know the stormwater calculations. And these are actually, I think the town engineer is also looking at, you know, amending this town's stormwater regulations, where, you know, the designer for the storm would be more precise, we included. I don't want to speak something that I'm not fully sure of, but those are addressed through that and not through the application.
Well, I would just think a simple question, do you know if, if stormwater regulations will apply here? Do you know what I mean, you could?
Yes, they would apply for every application. That's part of our review, and the engineer.
Oh, it is? No, that's during construction. You include it during construction, you don't include it as a after the fact?
Where is that?
I see it on page seven, under other requirements, stormwater discharges shall not contain visible floating stuff, et cetera.
Yeah, it is after the fact, too.
When I, the problem that we had was, we, all of this, this page seven basically was during the development phase.
No, I think it says stormwater discharge shall not result in pollution due to acute or chronic toxicity to aquatic and marine, marine life. I think this is not just during construction, but in general, stormwater discharge.
I, okay, I would suggest you check that, because I was told that this is only construction, so.
And they did, they do, they do have a stormwater management plan that they abide by to review the applications, which.
Because I was told that, that after the, everything is accepted, there, there is essentially a long-term stormwater.
If you want, I can include a line in there saying MS four permit requirements also apply.
That's, that would be perfect.
Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, can I make a motion or have a motion made to accept the new?
I move that, with the exception of the addition of the.
What addition?
Stormwater after effect line, that we accept this new form, and with great thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that was passed unanimously, very nice job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Members' comments and or, and or concerns? No, hearing none? Who wants to motion to adjourn this month?
Oh, good, I've been so quiet today. No, go ahead, go, 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 go.
Well, don't fight over it, but somebody do it. Thank you.
Seconded by Watson.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, enjoy the rest of July.